Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
And it looks like, Eric, are you there? I see John.
Yeah, Eric's here in the chambers.
Um, real quick, do we have, is Steve coming today? Or in, or there?
This is Schrader with staff. Steve was a no and Patricia Surfing had not responded.
Okay. All right, well, it is 4:01 and we'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of planning, programming, and zoning commission to order. First item on the agenda is approval of today's agenda. Any discussion, revision questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion carried. Um, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from May 11. Any discussion, revisions, or questions?
I think Eric and I were present, oh, that's the May 4th. It would be the next one I'm looking at. Okay, we're good. Uh, motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Minutes approved. Um, next we'll have the financial report for April, please.
This is Schrader with staff. So this financial report represents 83% of the fiscal year. Uh, looking on the revenue side, um, we're doing pretty good. At 138% with property sales being the main reason we've done good on property sales. And there's a couple of property sales that could close yet within this fiscal year. So that might even be better. And then looking down on the expense side, um, we're at 84%. So really, really close to right on. No concerns.
So now I have a question for you, Eric. Is the 138% for property sales is because property sales are being processed and closed early and paid early?
Not necessarily early, but when you budget for the property sales, we do our best guess. I think, you know, as was discussed in the past, they look at previous year's sales and kind of do averages and project, but it's a best guess. And some years we come under whatever we estimate for property sales. We don't sell as much as we had hoped and budgeted. And some years we come in over, which is obviously a good thing if we sell more property and make more money. This year we've come in over budgeted, but I mean, it's not really because anything's necessarily quicker than normal. It's, it's just, it's always just a guess as to how much, you know, we're gonna think we're gonna sell.
So the 138% is a positive number. That's a good thing.
Yeah, for revenue, that's a positive. That means we, we collected more revenue than we budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Eric? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to place the report on file?
No move.
Second.
Okay, any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda, um, it's the time for oral presentation. This is anyone who might be in the chambers or on the phone who is here to speak on a non-agenda item, so something that's not already on the agenda. Um, Eric, is there anyone in the chambers?
We do have some in attendance in the chambers. Doesn't look like any of them are wanting to talk on a non-agenda item.
Okay, um, is there anyone else on the call who's here to speak, um, on an item that's not already on the agenda? Okay. Being done, move on to new business. The time is 4:05 PM and a hearing is scheduled at this time for a request by C-10 Investments LLC for the rezon of approximately six acres from R3 multiple residence district to S1 shopping center districts located at 2101 Kimball Avenue in order to construct a new commercial center. This is on pages 13 through 27 of the packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letters, overview aerial notice map, and a plat of site were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on May 25, 2021." I have a motion to receive and place this notice on file.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, first, um, we will have the staff report and, um, I don't know, do you want to, sorry, do you want to combine this with the, um, item, the plat, preliminary plat as well?
This is Schrader with staff. That would be fine by staff. You could cover both, both staff reports at once.
Okay, all right. Take it away. Thank you.
This is Dornoff with staff. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property in question for commercial development. The former Schweitz hospitals currently sits on the site, which will be demolished and the area redeveloped. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on neighborhood as the property is at the corner of Kimball Avenue, Ridgeway Avenues, which are, um, which have commercial businesses on all three corners and are zoned S1. Their, um, their request could have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic movements in the area. The area is served by Kimball Avenue and Ridgway Avenue, which are both classified as minor arterials. Engineering and traffic operations are recommending that a limited traffic study be done to look at, um, the access locations and the anticipated traffic counts and movements to determine if the existing intersection configuration will work or additional turn lanes might be needed. The area at the proposed site is currently zoned R3 multiple residence district as zone as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance 2479 in 1969. Surrounding land uses and their zoning to the north, medical office and residential zoned R3 multiple residence district. To the south, Ridgway Avenue, commercial zoned S1 shopping center district. To the east is West High School, zones R3, um, multiple residence district. And to the west is Kimball Avenue, and Kimball Avenue and commercial zoned S1 shopping center district. Um, medical office was built in 1981, residences built in between 1952 and 1953. West High School was originally construction in 1955 and commercial was built between 1962 and 2016. Um, the future land use map design necessary is mixed residential, um, low, medium, high density residential, professional offices, and neighborhood commercial. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan of future land use map. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately six acres from R3 multiple residence district to S1 shopping center district. The site is currently occupied by a former hospital and its respective parking. The facility will be demolished and redeveloped for commercial uses. The applicant is seeking to plat the site, which will consist of four lots, three of which will be, um, is being proposed to be rezoned for our three, from R3 multiple residence district to S1 shopping center district, while the fourth lot will remain R3 multiple residence district. The site includes one lot with one commercial building and 32 parking spaces. Lot two shows one commercial building and 24 parking spaces. And lot three shows three buildings with 44 parking spaces. The exact number of spaces to, will be needed to determine when the building permit, during the building permit process. Therefore, staff recommends a request by C-10 Investments LLC for rezoning of approximately six acres from R3 multiple residence district to S1 shopping center district located at 2101 Kimball Avenue in order to construct a new commercial center be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on surrounding areas. The proposed rezon will assist in redevelopment of the former Schweitz hospital that has been largely vacant for the last couple of years with the following conditions that the final site plan meet all applicable city codes, um, regulations, etc., including but not limited parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, and that a limited traffic study be performed before the request is submitted to city council. And I move to the plat. The applicant is requesting to plat the former, um, to plat Schweitz addition, a four lot commercial subdivision located 2101 Kimball Avenue. The former hospital complex is currently located on the site and scheduled to be demolished as part of the project. The applicant is requesting the lots one, two, and three be rezoned from R3 multiple residence district to S1 shopping center district where lot four remains R3 multiple residence district. Lot one is 1.08 acres, lot two is 1.31 acres, lot three is 3.61 acres, and lot four is 1.88 acres for a total of 7.88 acres. The preliminary plat includes the legal description, existing topographical contours, property lines, dimensions, building setback lines, date, North Arrows, scale, and owner, sanitary sewer location, water system location, storm sewer location, size of buildings, size of individual lots, and street names. Um, if joining subdivisions will need to be, um, added, including unplanted to the east. An easement will need to be shown for the storm sewer that's on the south side of lot three. Uh, 10-foot utility easements will need to be added to the, um, along the street frontages. And proposed contours will need to be added. Engineering also has a few other, um, can, a few other changes they need to be made to the plat. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to the C-10 Investments LLC for preliminary plat of Schweitz addition of four lot, um, commercial subdivision located 2101 Kimball Avenue be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have negative impact to surround the area. Request would not appear to have negative impact on traffic conditions in the area with the following conditions that the plat is updated with additional, and with the additional documents as requested by staff before it is sent to the city council.
Okay, I have a question. This is Do Not. Where would the things that are currently in the old Schweitz building or where in the old Schweitz building go? I mean, like, wasn't Kimball Ridge there? So those, those things, where, where did they end up going if the building is empty?
Well, the nursing home closed, what, about three years ago, four years ago? And so that's been, and they used it temporarily for, um, COVID testing last year, but beyond that, it's been pretty much empty.
Okay, so there's, there's no, there's nobody being pushed out of, they were there and now they're?
No.
Yeah, okay.
And the medical arts building is not going to be removed. It's sand, so.
Okay.
This is Flynn, and, um, first of all, I had a question. Ridgway and Kimball are, are considered minor arterials. What would be considered major? I would think those are pretty busy streets.
Yeah. Uh, this is Schrader with staff. Um, I would have to review the federal functional classification map. It's produced by the Iowa Department of Transportation in, um, cooperation with the local metropolitan planning organization. I think that it, it's kind of the higher classification other than what's considered a principal arterial, which are basically the actual highways.
So that'd be the next highest under.
The next highest up would basically be if it's a, a full-blown highway.
Okay.
I'll, I'll review that, but I don't think there are any principal arterials that aren't like 21863.
Okay, so this would be the next under. Okay. Then secondly, what is gonna happen to the tunnel that goes under Ridgway?
That's gonna be either filled in or removed or?
Decommissioned.
Decommissioned one way or another.
Okay, and then curb cuts? Are we looking at curb cuts?
This is Schrader with staff, so the proposed, uh, site plan that's in the packet does show curb cut locations, and that was based on some initial review between the developer and the city of Waterloo. Um, but that is proposed to be taken a little closer look at in the traffic study that was mentioned as.
And I'm primarily like the current curb cuts, like they have that circle entrance off of Ridgway, just one circle, then it goes straight down. Would that curb cut be eliminated and potentially moved or?
Kinda looks like it.
That's what I thought when I looked at it, but I didn't know.
Yeah, this is Schrader with staff. I believe the existing driveway on Ridgway would not line up with proposed driveways, but the developer is here and he can.
Okay, perfect. Save that question. Thank you.
Any other initial questions for staff before we, um, let the developer weigh in? Okay, um, is the applicant either there, um, Eric or on the phone?
Uh, I'm here. So good afternoon. Uh, my name is Jeff Stickford. I represent C-10. Um, we've been working on this project for a couple of years and have taken a couple of shots at trying to make a project work. And, uh, I think we've made some good traction along those lines. Uh, to ask, answer Eric's question, um, the building has been fully vacant for over a year. Uh, the last part of the hospital was occupied with some internal staff as well as, uh, physical therapy type center, and those have been both relocated, so. And then on the driveways, uh, we are gonna maintain the three current curb cuts, uh, with the circle drive being the only one that's relocated. So, uh, we're gonna utilize the existing, um, curb locations, so.
And no additional then?
No, I, I don't believe this project would support that due to the amount of traffic, so.
Yeah.
I've had some preliminary discussions, um, with our engineer, and so we're trying to work towards a solution on, uh, figuring out what that limited traffic study would look like. And, um, so we're pretty excited. Um, this project is slated to, to happen maybe later this year or early next. Any questions from P and Z? Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else there, um, Eric, in the chambers here to speak on this agenda item?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Good afternoon. Jim Lind, 2:30 East Ridgway Avenue, behalf of Jim Lind Service. You can go ahead. Okay, I'm sorry. I was waiting for the, the next one. Yeah. Thank you, and, and Jeff, thanks for your explanation about the curb cuts, because that's one question that I had, because it was tough to tell on this and what was on the screen, what the curb cuts are. The one that is gonna be relocated, where to?
Uh, it would line up with the existing drive on the south side that enters the strip mall.
So then it's not being changed?
It is. It moves to the west a little bit.
Okay. All right.
So like right by Papa Murphy's and Urban Pie, you'd go in there?
Yeah.
So it's farther down towards the corner?
Toward what? Be going toward West High?
No, towards, towards Kimball.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep.
Forgive me. Yeah. How, how many feet?
Not easy towards west. Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a footage on that.
Okay, okay, okay. All right.
I can show it on the screen here.
Yeah. You can. Okay.
Mr. Lind?
Yeah.
If you can see on this screen, can you, right here's the driveway that would be moved. Can you see my cursor there?
Yes, sir.
And he's saying it would line up?
There.
With this driveway across the street here. So it would be moved from here to here.
Okay.
Otherwise, the other two are remaining, right?
Okay, all right. Um, so is that set in stone curb cuts?
Uh, this is Schrader with staff. It's not set in stone because the city is, um, looking to require a limited traffic study, which will look at the access points, uh, although it's what they're currently proposing because it does line up with where they're proposing a lot line between two lots.
Okay, all right. And in the technical committee, they called it a minor traffic study. Now, twice today, I've heard it called a limited traffic study. What's the difference between a traffic study and minor slash limited traffic study? And then I assume there must be a major traffic study?
This is Schrader with staff. That's getting a little outside of my expertise to answer, but a traffic study can encompass, uh, you know, anything from just looking at general traffic counts of existing roads or expected traffic counts of a development or both, or could go into a lot more detailed study of looking at access locations, distance, uh, stacking, uh, turning movements, primary, primary turning movements. In other words, a particular development, is it anticipated to have most of its traffic coming from what direction and what turning movements that would create and what potential conflicts? So, um, the traffic engineer for the city of Waterloo, uh, is, as I understand it, working with the applicant's engineer to kind of determine what level of detail that they would be looking for. And I'm not really sure what that level of detail is at this point.
And in that techno committee, the traffic engineer talked about possibly another lane and would need eight feet from the developer?
That's not been determined yet.
Could be.
Okay, all right. Because I didn't know if we're gonna have to double deck or, because it's, the sidewalk's already on the street, so, so you're gonna have to, if you keep a.
Right, if any lanes would have to be added, it would involve acquiring right of way, yes.
Okay, all righty. Um, then also in that technical report, and it was mentioned a couple of times about drainage, that that building has its own storm drain system, if you will. And we have a situation down at Ridgway, West Ridgway, in Bel Air, right by the Village Inn. And I'll tell you, this has been great for business, but every good rainstorm, we have a swimming pool there. And cars are stranded there all the time. Nothing's ever been done about it. I just don't wanna have another one of those because of whatever reason, or we changed something with the old Schweitz hospital and new and what, what have you. And I'm not throwing Village Inn under the bus. It was there well before their issue of what I call that vehicle swimming pool. So anyway, drainage is a concern to me. Um, what kind of street closures or inhibiting the roadway will take place during demolition or construction?
Uh, I anticipate, uh, maybe a westbound outside lane only, uh, very limited. That would only deal with the tunnel.
Okay. So for those that couldn't hear that, it was anticipated to be a westbound own lane only closure related to the tunnel work.
So who is responsible for the tunnel closure?
The, the developer would be responsible.
Okay. And may we get into detail how that occurs? I mean, we've had a zipper on the street. It was closed last summer to change the water system for the cancer center in the old Schweitz building because Covenant had left or leaving the Schweitz building. So we had the street closed for a couple of weeks. When they put a water pipe in, I wish they would have closed it then. So I didn't know if just gonna dig a hole and fill it up with sand, or do you have to dig, close the whole street?
I would say, Jeff, if you wanna answer that one, come up to the mic so everyone can hear.
Yeah, right. Uh, so all this work will happen subsurface. So we're gonna enter the tunnel from our property line. Um, they have a product called Flowable Mortar. This is pumped, injected into the tunnel. The primary reason for this is so that the tunnel were to collapse, we don't end up with an eight-foot deep hole in the middle of the street. So there will be no street work pertaining to our tunnel work or demolition. Um, the only thing would be utility disconnections and we're not aware of where those are currently, so.
Okay. Yep. And I greatly appreciate that you're gonna keep the street open, because I was thinking we might as well put a zipper on it and be done, done with it. Um, is this area, is it considered a opportunity zone or TIF district? Or is any of those, uh, state or federal or local incentives involved in this or part of this program?
This is Schrader with staff. There have been discussions on the development of a TIF district to cover this. I'm not aware of any other existing programs that would cover this area.
And could you explain to me what the TIF district does?
Uh, so if it was placed into a TIF district, then that provides the city of Waterloo the ability to, provides incentives to help the development. Those incentives could, um, range, um, from different, in things, but I think the primarily, the primary one being discussed is tax rebates. So in other words, the developer would build something, it would pay taxes on that something, and a portion of those taxes could be rebated.
Um, now the car, and I, if this is not Jermaine's, speak up, but the new car wash by the Menards on Hammond and San Marnon, got tax dollar, property tax relief on that program?
Uh, this is Schrader with staff. I'm not for sure on that. It is in the San Marnon TIF district, so, um, I'm not sure if there's anyone else that, uh, in the room or on the call that is familiar with that one. It might have.
But this currently is not a TIF district.
Currently not.
Okay, and so that'd have to.
Eric?
Is that Noel?
Eric, this is Noel.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so the, uh, just to answer the question that Mr. Lind asked, so the, the car wash out in front of the Menards is located in the Crosswoods TIF district.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and was given a couple of years of tax rebates, um, for, for the investment there.
So, this is Flynn. When you say tax rebate, do they get their full tax rebated or is it portion or prorated or how, how is that figured?
Um, it was, it was a portion, so I, I don't have it right in front of me, but the car wash, um, in front of Menards, I, I wanna say it was like, uh, two or three years of 50% tax rebates, something of that nature. Um, it's based on the value being created. And then there was also some difficulty with that being a Brownfield site due to the former gas station where Cedar Valley Mobility is on Hammond. Um, so they had to go to some, uh, more intensive types of materials for, I think, their water and sewer lines in that area, particularly the water. Um, so, and that, by our, by our policies, that allowed them to get a little bit more rebates for the extra cost in, in construction.
So can you explain to us as far as the, this district that we're talking about, or the old Schweitz building, what the, um, TIF incentive would be there?
Sure, I mean, nothing's been approved by council yet, so it's, I guess it would all be just potential, um, because we're working through those numbers. But essentially, uh, the city of Waterloo could adopt a TIF district, either a standalone TIF district for the site, or we could connect it to an existing TIF district, the closest probably being San Marnon, so that, uh, TIF line would come up Kimball from the San Marnon area and then pick up this site as kind of like a flagpole. Um, so the two options would be that standalone or that extension. Um, I, I would, I would say that the discussions are, are based on, similar to what we did at Highway 63 and Ridgway, um, with the large triangular site there, um, over by Gulf Headquarters. Um, we set it up so that there was a, a, a number of years of tax rebates available, um, hopefully that would pay for, it would be calculated on the cost for demolition of the site. Um, but it's all based on the developer, Mr. Stickford, getting things built there to create a taxable value. So, you know, if he got four, if he got three buildings built there right away, um, that would create, that would get him some tax rebates being paid back. If he was unable to get any projects for the first four years, I mean, he wouldn't be getting any tax rebates those years. So it, it kind of puts the, the pressure on the developer to get the job done and get some development happening there, which is what we all wanna see, um, to create that tax base. Um, but that, that would be my, my recommendation as to how we're moving ahead with this at this point. It's basically to kind of cover the costs of. It's basically to kind of cover the costs of this being a little bit of a unique site in that we have a large empty building there, and so it's to help with those demolition costs. But otherwise, make it like a normal development where they would be responsible for the platting of the land and then getting built, projects built.
Thank you.
How, if I may ask, how long would the TIF district be in effect?
I think as a, as a, if it was an extension to San Marnon, um, it would have to be an Echon Development TIF, which they have a, a shelf life of 20 years maximum by state code. Um, if it was a standalone with the majority of the site being needed for demolition, it could potentially be set up as a blighted, um, TIF district, um, which then would not have a timeline. Um, you know, I, I think based on how we'd set it up, um, I, I would, I would hope that the 20-year normal timeframe would work, and so we could, we could definitely, that's a discussion to have with, with the city council as to what they want to see out there too, but, um, I, I think, I think maximum would be 20 years. Hopefully, it would be, it would be done sooner than that to, to pay back the debt and then, then release the TIF, um, back off the site.
And when you release a TIF, then it goes back into the general tax rolls to support the city?
It would go back into the, into the general tax rolls for the city. It would also then go, a greater share would go to the county and to the schools as well.
And you use the term blight, and I've heard that term before, but to me, that isn't in keeping with Kimball Ridgway. I don't think that's a blighted area.
No, I mean, I, I think the reference to blight would be the fact that, that I, and I don't know, Jim, exactly how many years. I think the majority of the, the hospital building has been vacant and they've been unable to get anyone in there. And so, it's, it's a question, like I said, it's a question of whether or not it could be counted as blight. We'd have to look at that a little bit more, but I think our intentions are that the 20 year would be enough, so we wouldn't have to, to look at that and go with the normal Echon Development TIF layout.
And don't get me wrong, or Jeff, get me wrong, we, I, very supportive of having some neighbors across the street again, like we had, had for many years, and we certainly want to see that again. And we just worry about our tax dollars. I've been there 52 winters, if, if you will, in property taxes we, we paid every year to the general fund, if you will, to the city and the county and the schools. We've got a new restaurant that just opened up to, to the west of the station, uh, and, uh, I don't remember them being down here looking for anything. And nothing against Jeff for looking for anything, I, I understand it, because that's kind of the way of the world right now. But what's gonna go in there, we have plenty of, a- already. And I'm happy with the competition, I'm not worried about that. But why is the government, government, government picking possibly winners and losers in this scenario and using my tax dollars? That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Um, Eric, is there anyone else there in the chambers that's here to speak on this agenda item?
Does not appear to be.
Is there anyone else on the phone or by video who is here to speak on this agenda item? Okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Here, um, do we have a motion from the commission?
This is Schoberg. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation or approve the applicant's request C10 investments to construct a new commercial center. Be approved for the following reasons. The request should not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request should not appear to have negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The re-proposed rezone will assist in the redevelopment of the former Schweitz Hospital site that has largely sat vacant for the last few years with the following conditions. The final plot, site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including to, limited to parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, et cetera. That unlimited traffic study be performed before the request is submitted to city council, as well as that the plot is updated and additional documents are submitted as required by staff before the request is sent to city council.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I had a discussion point. Did you want to do the other one as well in the same motion?
Um, I, I kind of did both of them or both of the conditions, anyway.
He did both the conditions.
I'm seconding you, because I only heard one, but that's alright. I'm okay.
Sounds good.
Yep.
This is Flynn. As far as discussion, I really, I, I live in that area, and I really would like to see a traffic study and to know, you know, what kind of traffic study it is. Just, you know, if we're counting cars or, you know, I, I, I think that's important, um, before, um, it's totally finalized. Obviously, it goes to council and, you know, we're just rezoning right now, but I would appreciate that also. And to Mr. Lynn, for the TIF district, this committee has nothing to do with that. So, um, if you want to come to council and express your concern there, I, I do appreciate your comments, but, um, we have no jurisdiction over that whatsoever, so.
This is Schrader with staff. Creation of a new district or an amendment to on will come before the commission, but yeah, it's not on the agenda here.
Right. But I, I think it's great to have development in that area, I really do, because it has sat for a while. Um, and, um, I think it would only be a betterment for the area, uh, the businesses. Hopefully, they're very conducive to a neighborhood with the high school there, um, very close. Um, would like to see something that, um, would be positive for our high school students, so.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion carried. Thank you to everyone who, um, was here to speak on this agenda item. Next item on our agenda is a request, a request by Terrell M. Hoskins, Jr. for a special permit to allow for a pop-up drive-in movie theater on the grounds of National Cattle Congress located at 204 Amesboro Avenue in the M1 Light Industrial District to add an additional site, site two. And this is pages 28 through 40 of the packet. Um, can we have the staff report, please?
This is Western with staff. I'm going to, uh, abbreviate the staff report, being that we just reviewed, uh, this last month, uh, that was unanimously recommended for approval and was unanimously approved by the Board of Adjustment as well. Uh, this particular request is for the east side of the site. The original, last month's, um, site was up to the east, um, of, of the Cattle Congress grounds.
West.
Or west, I'm sorry, to the west. Now, we're talking about the east side today. Um, the proposed pop-up drive-in movie theater will have a 50-foot inflatable theater screen, an industrial projector, laptop and generator. Past drive-in theaters typically had a permanent structure which housed a kitchen where customers could purchase food and snacks. However, the applicant is not planning on building any permanent structures on the site, but plans to lease spaces to a variety of food vendors instead. There will be ADA compliant porta potties available as well, um, as well as access to a permanent bathroom on the Cattle Congress grounds. The applicant has submitted three alternative layouts for the second site. All will utilize existing paved and striped parking lot along Amesboro Avenue at the main entrance to the Cattle Congress grounds. Uh, Plan A would put the screen on the south side of the property facing east. Plans B and C would put the screen on the west and east ends of the parking lot respectively. The hours of operation will be from 9:00 PM to 12:30 AM on Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. The applicant plans on showing a double feature each night with an approximate combined movie playtime of three hours and 30 minutes. On the nights that children or family movies are played, there will be a short laser-like show around 8:45 PM with the first movie beginning at 9:00 PM. Also, once a month on Friday and Saturday nights, the applicant plans to have a 10-to-20 minute firework display instead of the laser-like show before the movie begins. The applicant plans to hire a small team of security guards to monitor the drive-in site during the movies to ensure that the event is peaceful and is alcohol and drug-free, a drug-free environment at all times. At the technical review meeting, there were concerns expressed with Plan A and the use of the westerly interest, entrance, as it appears that it is not intended to be used for vehicular traffic flow, but more for pedestrians entering Cattle Congress grounds. The applicant has agreed to, uh, remove Plan A based on, uh, the concerns expressed, uh, but would like to have options B and C, uh, approved this evening. Um, also, uh, this afternoon, um, I was giving, given, and I have a handout for you guys. Um, the applicant would also like the, uh, recommendation of approval for a future permanent sign on the west side of the Cattle Congress grounds. But for this year, what he plans to do is have the two inflatables, and while he's doing, using those two inflatables, he plans to construct a permanent sign on the west side of the site. Or, well, I'm sorry, screen. Um, and I also talked with the applicant quite a bit today. Uh, he is in talks with a professional security company, uh, that he hopes to hire to, uh, make sure that the, um, site remains alcohol and drug-free and is a family-oriented, uh, atmosphere. And he's also considering ways to have, uh, um, provide traffic control, uh, as the movies, uh, start and let out, so. And I believe the applicant is on, um, via Zoom.
I am.
Yep.
Okay.
I apologize, my, um, I've been having some issues with my, my phone, so you can't see my face, I don't think.
We can hear you, though.
Okay, that's, that's great.
Um, are there any initial questions for staff?
Uh.
Before we turn to the.
I've got questions, but I don't know who they should be directed towards. So, my first question is, uh, this is Do Not. My first question, let's see, hold on. I can't get my cursor to work. Um, my first question was gonna be about Plan A. I couldn't get my cursor to work. But, uh, my other questions were, have all the concerns with the tech review note, uh, the tech review committee notes about fire and emergency access been addressed? And I also had some questions about, um, accessibility and hard servicing, and would those issues be addressed as they were previously, uh, for example, last month? And I think that's it. That's it for now.
Well, I can, uh, start. Um, so, the applicant has met with engineering, has met with the building department, and he understands the codes that are required for hard servicing. Um, he does plan on the west side where there are, there isn't sufficient hard surface. There is some recycled asphalt on, uh, a large portion of it, but it does not meet the minimum codes for hard servicing requirements. Uh, but he does understand that he will need to, at least asphalt, uh, around the porta potties to make it easier for, um, uh, ADA compliance, uh, and, and individuals in wheelchairs to be able to get in and out of the porta potties. And also, at some point, uh, the applicant does plan to provide, I believe we came up with five to six handicap parking stalls as well. And as far as fire, uh, fire, I don't believe had any concerns, uh, with this request.
And then, um, what about the permanent, the permanent bathroom on site? Is that accessible, or would there be accessible stalls for the bathroom that will be permanently on site?
I, I actually am not aware, and, you know, being that Cattle Congress is very, very old, I don't know if these bathrooms are built to ADA compliance for sure. Perhaps the applicant can answer that when, uh, when he, you guys are ready for him.
And then for the screen, the permanent screen, are the, um, the National Cattle Congress owners, are they okay with that, having the permanent screen available?
From what the applicant stated today, the, uh, Cattle Congress, um, uh, managers actually suggested it, it was their idea.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, just to throw this out too, um, that permanent sign would have to be reviewed by the 218 Design Review Committee as well.
Yeah, because they, the same issues with, um, the lighting with the vehicles and the highway and, from what we discussed last month is what I'm talking about. Those would still be issues.
Yeah, the applicant has agreed, uh, if you remember, to move the screen to the east of the site, uh, per the suggestion of the DLT. So, that's all been settled.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions for staff?
Um, so, the porta potties, uh, the wheelchair, um, accessible, or the, the ones, so, on, on the site two, um, on the parking lot area, now, since that's concrete, I mean, I, I don't have to, uh, do anything special with those, uh, wheelchair accessible porta potties, do I?
This is Schrader with staff. No, if the porta potties are sitting on the concrete or sitting, uh, on a grass in a way that's directly accessible off of the concrete, then no.
I support that.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that out there.
And, and we, we would decide to go without the, um, so there's, there, I, I drew out on the plans, uh, two entrance and exit, uh, areas. Um, I know there was a concern with the, um, the entrance on the, um, is that the wet or, let me see, the, the west end, the west entrance? We can definitely go without that and just go with the, the one on the east side of the parking lot. Um, it's gonna be, you know, just more suitable in general, uh, safer, um, more room to get in and out, so, uh, we don't have any problem with that. Yep.
Are there other questions for Mr. Hoskins?
When are you hoping to open?
By mid-July, before mid-July. We're still working on a few things. Uh, we had to, had to push the start date back just a little, uh, but everything is flowing accordingly, so by mid-July, we should be ready.
I got one other question. So, this drive-in theater won't be in operation when Cattle Congress is going on?
No, we don't plan to be at all. It, it, it probably wouldn't work out anyway with the space, you know, uh, being occupied. Uh, definitely not the parking lot area, but we're, we're probably not going to be operating the, um, the far west side either during that time.
Are you anticipating a season kind of, I'm sure it's weather-related, but, um, typically you'd want maybe May to September or something? Is that what you're thinking, or?
Uh, as far as the term, as far as, well, so we'll probably go through the month of September and stop somewhere, uh, I'm, I'm assuming either before or early October, um, shutdown.
Perfect, thank you.
Just for clarification, you're, you're talking about the, uh, temporary screen for now, is that correct? And then a couple of years down the road? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, actually, what, what, uh, what I was, what I, what we were wanting to do is, you know, we've been talking, uh, recently about the permanent screen on that, on that far west end site. Um, we just started talking about that because it's just more stable, um, and it's just, it's gonna be easier on us, it's gonna be, uh, more presentable, um, it's better in every way. Uh, but we'd like to, you know, possibly get that going, uh, soon, and then in the, in the meantime, utilize the inflatable on that far west end, and then we'll be able to occasionally show movies in the parking lot if that is approved, um, while the, uh, permanent structure is being constructed. So, hopefully, we'd be able to use that permanent structure, uh, before the end of the season. We may have a couple of months to use that. We may have a couple of months to use that before the end. If things go accordingly.
When is, Eric, when is the National Cattle Congress Fair?
September. It's usually like the second week of September, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, thirteen, six in my mind.
Well, the applicant just talked about closing his, closing his facility down for the season at the beginning of early October.
Right, but I think he's saying he wouldn't have it on the weekend of Cattle Congress.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was taking it, yeah.
Okay.
That's correct, yep.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Hoskins? Okay, Eric, is there anyone else in the chambers that's here to speak on this agenda item?
Does not appear to be.
And Cattle Congress is September twenty-second through the twenty-sixth this year. So it's late September.
Is there anyone on the phone here to speak on this agenda item?
I did have one other question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, we're looking at using a generator, since it's just far more convenient than, you know, using a bunch of cables and stuff, and it's a lot safer, too. Would we be able to get a pass on using an eight-thousand-watt generator to, you know, run our equipment on the site?
This is Schrader with staff.
Looking at an enclosure also, sorry.
Yeah, this is Schrader with staff. We're gonna have no knowledge or input on what type or size generator you're gonna need. That's probably gonna be.
Cattle Congress staff.
Yeah, I mean, building inspections might have some input. Fire department might have some input. But otherwise, I would say that's gonna be between you and the Cattle Congress.
Okay, understood.
This is Western with staff. I remember last month, I believe the fire department had a requirement of twenty feet from any combustible, like the screen or anything that's combustible, so.
I don't think there's anyone else on the call that's here to speak on this agenda item then. So do we have a motion?
I got a quick question on the, the process of the motion. Do we, do we wanna include anything, any wordage about the permanent screen in this?
This is Schrader with staff. The applicant is requesting that you do, and staff is okay with in inclusion of that in the motion to allow for a permanent screen to be installed in the approved Site One location.
And to follow up on that, do we have to specify whether we're approving Plan B or C? Or are they both approved and then that's worked out?
This is Schrader with staff. I, I would, I mean, it's up to the commission how you wanna make that recommendation, but I would be okay recommending all of them. And even Site A might have, you know, some minor modifications that could potentially make it work as well. The advantage that Site A has over Site B and C is it's putting the screen in a direction of view from the current layout of the parking lot striping. So, maybe that's not a big deal, but I guess with option B or C, the cars are probably gonna be parking against the striping, which I doubt Cattle Congress is gonna re-stripe the parking lot. So it's, it's gonna involve more work on the applicant from how you get cars in and out of there properly. But, I mean, from staff's standpoint, any of the options are viable?
Cody, did you wanna make a motion?
I will go ahead and do that. Let's see if I can get back on the plans again. Okay, so I will make the motion that we approve the request by Terrell M. Hoskins, Sr. for a special permit to allow for a drive-in movie theater on the grounds of the National Cattle Congress located at 204 Ansboro in the M1 Light Industrial District to add on an additional Site Two. And to include, for the construction of a permanent screen on Site One for the following reasons: The special permit should not have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The special permit should not have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. And the request is compatible with typical National Congress, Cattle Congress events and would be good use of an area when other events are not occurring at the facility.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate your support.
One minute, we just have a, but, hold on. So you're okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, thank you, Mr. Hoskins, we appreciate.
All right, now I can wipe off the sweat off my brow, thank you.
I hope there's hot dogs.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a request by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC in care of Ward Development to increase the height of a monopole wireless communication power from one-hundred-and-twenty feet to one-hundred-and-forty-five feet located at 535 Louise Street. This is on pages forty-one through seventy-seven of the packet. We have the staff report, please.
This is Western with staff. The application for a special permit by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC on behalf of AT&amp;T to allow for the modification of an existing wireless telecommunications facility consisting of a twenty-five-foot extension to an existing one-hundred-and-twenty-foot-tall monopole tower with expansion of the attendant ground-based equipment compound on property leased by American Tower on a tract of land located at 535 West Louise Street in Waterloo, Iowa. The surrounding area has mixed uses, as to the north and east are residential uses and to the south and west are industrial uses. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood as the tower is located in a low-lying, heavily wooded area away from the line of sight of the nearby houses. The site is served by West Louise Street, which is classified as a local street. The proposed location of the expanded cell tower would not appear to cause a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. There are no sidewalks located along West Louise Street. There is a trail along the west side of Highway sixty-three east of the area in question. The site is located just west of 419 West Louise Street. The area was zone M2 Heavy Industrial District upon adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Again, to the north, there's residential zone R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District and R3 Multiple Family Residence District. To the south is A-line salvage yard, Zone M2 Heavy Industrial District. To the east, residential, Zone R2-1 and 2 Family Residence District. To the west, railroad, Zone M1 Light Industrial. The surrounding area has mixed uses, as to the north and east are residential uses and to the south and west are industrial uses. A special permit for rubble fill site was issued by the Board of Adjustment on 10/22/02, which utilized a portion of the western side of the property in question. At the time, the applicant noted that the filling would, would last approximately, well, that's approximately two years and will be planted with trees afterwards. On 9/26/06, the Board of Adjustment approved this special permit to allow a one-hundred-and-twenty-foot monopole wireless communications tower on the site. The area where the tower is located is not in an area once utilized by the rubble fill site. The request to increase the height of the tower by twenty-five feet would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood as the tower is located in a heavily wooded area and is approximately two-hundred-and-forty feet away from the closest property of nearby houses. Obviously, there would be no drainage problems with this request. It is not, it is located in a zone X protected by levy as determined by the FEMA Flood Insurance Rate Map adopted July eighteenth, two thousand and eleven. Carver Middle School is located approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty feet to the east. The Logan Avenue Bike Trail that runs along the front of Carver Middle School is located approximately one-thousand-nine-hundred feet to the east. There are existing utilities to serve the site. The Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map designates this area as industrial. A development such as this is allowable in the current M2 Heavy Industrial District upon approval of the Board of Adjustment after a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The City of Waterloo zoning ordinance requires new towers or significant changes to an existing tower. Go through the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission for recommendations of the Board of Adjustment similar to a special permit. The existing tower is located on a heavily wooded ten-acre parcel of ground Zone M2 Heavy Industrial. The applicant is proposing a new sixteen-foot-by-thirty-three-foot fenced equipment compound to be located adjacent to the existing seventy-five by, seventy-five feet by seventy-five feet fenced equipment compound. The existing one-hundred-and-twenty monopole tower receives, received a unanimous recommendation of approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission and approval by the Board of Adjustment in two thousand and six to be built approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the nearest single-family dwelling lot. Staff measured it at approximately two-hundred-and-forty. The proposal is for AT&amp;T to extend an existing one-hundred-and-twenty-foot-tall monopole cell tower by twenty-five feet to provide service to the area south of the Waterloo Airport. The site, when completed, will become part of AT&amp;T's network that will provide continued and improved coverage to the current service area presently in this portion of the city. The primary objective for AT&amp;T is to place a facility at this location to provide adequate coverage to residences in the area and vehicular traffic in all directions of the proposed site. This geographic area is part of the existing coverage in AT&amp;T's network. The site will provide for the newest equipment to be installed and provide citizens additional choices for their communication needs. The site will dramatically improve AT&amp;T's in-building coverage as customers continue to use their wireless devices as their principal form of communication. Local police and fire departments report that over seventy-five percent of 911 calls originate from wireless devices. The proposed new tower height would be one-hundred-and-forty-five feet. The ordinance requires a setback from any one- or two-family dwelling lots of twice the tower height, which would be a setback of two-hundred-and-ninety feet. Other than the request not meeting the setback requirement from one- and two-family dwelling lots, all other requirements for an additional twenty-five feet of tower would appear to be met. Based on the fact that the tower would be located on property zoned Heavy Industrial and the tower would be located on a large, on a large lot that is densely wooded, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area. With the increase in height, the tower is further out of compliance and is approximately two-hundred-and-forty feet from the nearest residential property located at 520 West Louise Street. The other property at sixteen-oh-three Ackerman is within the required setback, being approximately two-hundred-and-eighty feet away. Based on the fact that the tower is located on property zoned Heavy Industrial and the tower is located on a large lot that is densely wooded, and despite having two homes that are less than the minimum setback, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area. The setback of less than twice the tower height from one- or two-family properties will require issuance of a variance by the Board of Adjustment. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC on behalf of AT&amp;T and Ward Development to increase the height of a monopole wireless communications tower from one-hundred-and-twenty feet to one-hundred-and-forty-five feet located at 535 West Louise Street in a M2 Heavy Industrial District be approved for the following reasons: The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding, on the neighborhood or traffic conditions in the area. The request is in conformance with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. The tower would be located over two-hundred-and-forty feet from the nearest residential dwelling lot, which is less than twice the tower height from any one- or two-family dwelling lot, but is located in a densely wooded area zone for industrial development. In subject to the following condition: That the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including, but not limited to, parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. And staff would note that there was a call. The homeowner, I believe, lives in the five-hundred block of Louise, who has some concerns and was opposed to the original monopole tower being built in '06. And I believe she's here.
I'm not going in here.
Oh. Yep.
Questions? I have a question.
Go.
Okay, so, is there a height minimum or maximum of the pole? Because I would have thought that was in like the ordinance, the planning and zoning ordinance. And then, that was my, my other question was, was there any opposition from surrounding neighbors or at the apartment complex, either by residents or property owners of the complex or the nearby school? Because isn't there like Mark, Mount Carmel?
Mark, yeah.
Yeah. What's the name of the complex?
Mark, Mount Carmel Village.
Yeah, yeah. So, that apartment complex that I was referring to. And then there was a nearby school near there, so I just thought, would there be any opposition from any of those entities?
No, so, Mark Carmel, so there are only two properties that are of concern because they're less than two-hundred-and-fifty feet away. What's that? Oh, there we go. Sixteen, let's see, sixteen-oh-three Ackerman's two-eighty, so it's good. But 520 West Louise Street was under the two-fifty. Otherwise, it, it meets setbacks. So Mount Carmel Village's answer to your question would not be of concern because they're outside of that two-fifty.
Okay.
And the schools would not have an issue.
Right, schools as well.
The poles existing, you're just adding on top, so it would.
And it's outside the two-fifty as well, so.
It's two-ninety, not two.
Or two-ninety, yeah, two-ninety, sorry.
Out of curiosity, it looks like they had room to go further away from the residential properties. Why did they not build that tower further back?
This is Schrader with staff. You know, that would have been a decision that they made back in two thousand and six when they built it. As the staff report noted, there was a good portion of this site that was a rubble fill site. I don't know if farther south was part of that rubble. I know west was, so I don't know if maybe that's why they didn't go farther south. But I, I know in '06, they opted to go here, and obviously, now they can't really change that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there another question? Oh, go ahead.
Is the setback requirement just from residential properties? Or is it from commercial properties as well? Do you know?
So, the zoning ordinance has a couple of different setback requirements, one of which is just generally speaking from the property lines, you know, like regardless of what the adjoining property is, and it does meet that. But it has an additional setback requirement of twice the tower height from residential property. And there are the two properties identified in yellow that fall within that.
So, let me clarify my question. There is no, there is no requirement for the height of the actual tower?
There's no max height. They're just setback requirements that effectively limit the height in most situations.
Okay.
If there are further questions for staff, I believe the applicant is on the phone. Am I correct, Mr. Ward?
He's muted.
Good afternoon.
There we go.
Steve Ward with Ward Development.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do you want to address the commission, or is there anything that you would like to say?
I will do a couple of items, a couple of things. One, I think we had applied to the FAA, even though we reviewed the flight surfaces. We have, I understand that American Tower, who owns the facility, has received their FAA approvals. So I'll be getting a copy of that and I'll forward that to the city. One question that came up. One question that came up was why didn't they push it further back from the residential when they originally built? And I can't say. I mean, this was done way before my time. But there is a section of the code that says in the agricultural industrial zoning classifications, item I subsection C, that all proposed structures be set back one and a height, one and a half times the height of the tower from the nearest property line and be a monopole design. Well, if the tower was a hundred and twenty, it's got to be one point five, it needs to be a hundred and eighty. So I think that's how they situated that tower, we're a hundred and eighty feet from the south line, two hundred and forty feet from the north line of residential line, kind of puts that tower at that point. The other thing that was mentioned was the compound size. The compound, the lease area that they have is seventy-five feet by seventy-five feet. They have only fenced a small portion of that, and then we're going to just expand that fenced portion with a wooden fence of the same type by about thirty-three by eighteen feet. One of the other things that I don't think was mentioned that is in our submittal, we did review the existing tower at the, you know, the available center line would be about ninety feet. It just doesn't give us what we need for coverage. And with the tree height, it starts giving us shadowing pretty bad with our signal. So it's either, you know, we're trying to use existing structures whenever we can. So it's either extend structure or we'd have to come back and, you know, look at building a new tower nearby and coming back to the board. So I'm really, I'm here to answer any questions and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Ward? Eric, is there anyone else there? I think you indicated there was a property owner there to speak on this agenda item.
This is Schrader with staff. I think there might be a couple. Please come to the podium and identify your name and address.
Is there anybody else over there? I figured that.
Okay, maybe just one.
One question I have.
Give us your name and address.
Annie Mormon, sixteen oh four Ackerman Street, corner of Ackerman and West Louise. I've been through a lot of changes over the thirty-some years I've been there. We've been trying, they've been trying to get apartments and everything else. The funniest thing about it, we petition against this. Did you guys ever receive petition?
Recently?
No, when they tried to build the tower, when they were first doing it, we petitioned against it. Well, because we had petitioned, so I wanted to know what happened to that. I'm trying to find the person that was involved, he no longer, he sold his house, moved from the area. But I'm just in question about a lot of things going on because they want to, I know, want a little bit higher tower. And we're talking about the traffic, we've been complaining about the traffic and we still try and get a petition about the traffic because Mount Carmel Village come through there, but the tower is on the other side. Sixteen oh three, right? Ackerman, Mr. Western?
Five.
We got five hundred block of Louise, west, and then you got sixteen oh three Ackerman Street. So with sixteen oh three Ackerman Street, there's a cross. Because I'm sixteen oh four. So they're across the dump that's sitting there. The reason why they didn't build any, where they're supposed to build it at is because he does have a big gully there, sitting there with a lot of junk and trash and whatever it is. But I don't know where everybody's at. Everybody's supposed to be, so I'm so gung ho to come here and complain about it and nobody showed up except me. But I am against it, Mr. Ward, I'm sorry.
So can I ask you what what is, just with extending the height, it sounds like that is what they're doing?
They want to extend the height, that's what he's saying, instead of building another one. And I'm looking at already, they got Verizon and T-Mobile already on the two, and they didn't want to add AT&amp;T to it also, right? By extending it, am I correct? Right, am I correct?
They're adding a third one.
So you have three major networks stuck on one tower by expanding it, right?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, well, I'm sorry.
Would you prefer than to have three towers?
I prefer that we don't have nothing there.
Not, right, but you have one, so you.
We petition against it, I don't know what happened.
Well, I suppose we could have our planning staff go back to the minutes of the oh-six meetings and see if that was placed on file.
I'm sure that it would have been received and placed on file as part of that, but just a petition of opposition doesn't mean that a request for a cell tower is not going to be approved. There has to be a valid reason for that, you know, for for a request not to be denied or for a cell tower to be denied would require.
Okay, so I got to wait until the Board of Adjustment meeting is Tuesday the twenty-fifth, is what they're saying about this?
Yeah, the the Planning Commission will make, when they're done, when the item's done being discussed here, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation. They make a recommendation only, but then it'll go on to the Board of Adjustment for the final approval or denial, yes.
All the information I was supposed to have tonight, I don't know where it's at. You know, because I am retired, yeah, but I work, you know, part-time, but everybody else, I get off at four and five, nobody showed up, nobody called me.
Well, we appreciate you coming.
Oh, yeah. You're gonna hear about it tonight, five o'clock, no, I'm just kidding.
No, no, but I I mean, we totally do.
I'm really upset because I raised two boys there. Okay, my boys, I raised two kids there and through the year I have seen a lot, they put a speed limit up there for twenty-five miles, but on the other side over there was a lot of problem. And when they asked questions, I go on the other side, they went to Logan, I got them at George Carver right now, you know, and I've been trying to figure out the properties, A one, you know, different properties over there, but I was too scared to go anywhere and, you know, cross that boundary between Louise Street and going across there. Because I've been wanting to know when they were trying to build it, you know, I don't move from my area, but I ain't gonna do it tonight. I'm gonna make it this afternoon, I'm gonna this evening, I'm gonna make a point to go over there and take a look instead of getting the drone to show me, you know, tell me, oh, this one drone, this where is that, what you guys got here? I want to see it personally myself. Because if you want to expand and go up more, I want to see, will it cause any other effects? But you already got two on there and look like the third person, they want to add on to it. So I thank you very much.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Bye, Chris. Bye. Eric, is there anyone else there that's here to speak on this agenda item?
Does not appear to be.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the phone who's here to speak on this agenda item? Any additional questions for staff or do we have a motion?
Well, I have one quick question for staff. Are they expanding the equipment building that's on that site as well?
Yes.
And that's all included with?
Yeah, so the existing tower has a overall area of seventy-five feet by seventy-five feet, but only, I believe Mr. Ward said, only a portion of that is actually fenced in. They're going to be adding, what was it, thirty-three by eighteen? To that.
I guess you said that, I'm sorry.
And here's the page in the packet, it's on the screen there, this is kind of all the existing compound area, existing tower, and here's the new compound area.
Okay.
And the compound area doesn't have to be a certain distance, it's the tower, correct?
This is Schrader with staff. Correct, the compound area does not have to be. If the compound area is close to residential, we do sometimes take that into account. Usually it would just be like requiring different level of screening. Obviously, this one's not close to any property line, though.
And has there been any reports of vandalism to this tower, the, you know, equipment box, anything like that?
This is Schrader with staff. Nothing that I've heard of.
Okay, thank you.
And the equipment tower, I mean, the equipment shed or entity that we're talking about, that's to maintain the maintenance and do the work and everything.
All the electronics.
To make it run.
If there aren't any other questions, do we have a motion from the commission?
This is Flynn. I move to approve the request by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC AT&amp;T under the auspice of Ward Development to increase the height of a monopole wireless communications tower from one hundred and twenty feet to one hundred and forty-five feet located at five thirty-five West Louise Street in an M two heavy industrial district.
Second.
With the following recommendations.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. That the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood or traffic conditions in the area. The request is in conformance with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan. The tower would be located over two hundred and forty feet from the newest residential dwelling lot, which is less than twice the tower height from any one or two family dwelling lot, but is located in a densely wooded area zone for industrial development with the following subject condition, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Now, wait a second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you to everyone who's here. Next, we will have the request by Plum Supply Company to vacate a portion of Airline Highway located south of thirty-three thirty-eight West Airline Highway in the M one CZ Light Industrial Conditional District in pages seventy-eight through eighty-three of your packet. We have the staff report, please.
Yes, this is Hybrigger with the staff report. The applicant is requesting to vacate portions of city-owned right-of-way at south of three-three-three-eight West Airline Highway. The request to vacate city-owned right-of-way will enable the Plum Supply Company to have more access to its property and the land it needs to install a sixty-four square foot monument sign that will better advertise the site to truck drivers making deliveries. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area, and the vacate would match up with right-of-way that has already been vacated on adjoining properties. The site's been zoned M one CZ, conditional zoning light industrial district since February eleventh nineteen ninety-one with the passage of ordinance three-seven-six-four. The site was previously zoned M one light industrial district. North is vacant land, zoned M two P planned industrial district. To the south, east, and west, it's all industrial businesses, zoned M one light industrial district. The proposed vacate area would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage. The vacate area is not located in a special flood hazard area as indicated by FEMA. The vacate area does contain a twelve-inch water main, twelve-inch sewer main and gas line in the southerly portion of the vacate area. The utility companies have determined that a utility easement will need to be retained over the south twenty-five feet of the vacate area. The request to vacate city-owned right-of-way would not appear to negatively affect the area or traffic conditions. Similar vacate requests for city right-of-way along West Airline Highway were approved on January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen with the passage of ordinance five-four-seven-nine and on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one with the passage of ordinance five-five-eight-seven. Therefore, staff recommends the request by the to, from Plum Supply Company to vacate point four-eight acres of city-owned right-of-way at south of three-three-four-eight West Airline Highway located in the M one CZ conditional zoning light industrial district be approved for the following reason. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions in the area and subject to the following condition, a utility easement will be retained over the south twenty-five feet of the vacate area. That's a staff report.
Any questions for staff?
This is Flynn. What's a sixty-four SF monument sign?
Square feet. Oh, square feet, yeah. And and the recommendation accidentally says the City of Waterloo should be Plum Supply Company, so.
Okay, yeah.
When the motion's given.
I thought like there's some SF monument, I didn't know.
Oh, yeah, no, just just square feet. They just want to put up a bigger sign so people can see them when they drive by.
And I believe we have the applicant on the phone. Are there any other additional questions for staff? Okay, uh, am I correct that, Mr. Ruth, are you here to speak on this agenda?
Yes, I'm on the phone.
Okay. Is there anything you would like to say?
I don't think we have any.
Go ahead.
I don't think we have any other questions. I know we need to do a site survey before purchasing it and what the city determines, so we'll do whatever we need to do.
Any other questions for Mr. Ruth?
Well, I just wanted to make sure he was aware that a utility easement had to be retained over the south twenty-five feet of the vacated area.
This is Schrader with staff. I'll defer to him, but yeah, he should be. We originally thought we were going to have to retain it over the entire area, but after the technical review committee meeting and follow-up with the utility companies, it was determined that only the south twenty-five foot would need it, which really helps them out because originally it was going to be a request to vacate the right-of-way and then a request for an encroachment agreement to allow a sign in the easement that we would have to retain, but since now we only need the easement over the south twenty-five feet, the sign won't be in the easement, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, we have no problems with the easement, that'll be no problem for us.
Eric, is there anyone else there to speak on this agenda item?
No, there is not.
Okay, is there anyone else on the phone who's here to speak on this agenda item? Okay. We have a motion from the commission.
I'll move that the request to vacate, but request by the City of Waterloo to vacate.
Oh, it's actually a Plum, yeah, it was, I apologize, was it Plum Supply Company?
All right, well, I'm just reading what you had down here.
Yes, yes. What I had down was incorrect, I apologize.
Let me start over. The request by Plum Supply to vacate zero-point-four acres of city-owned right-of-way at south of thirty-three thirty-eight West Airline Highway located in the M one CZ conditional zoning light industrial district be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions in the area and subject to the retaining of a utility easement over the south twenty-five feet of the vacated area.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Ruth.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is a request by Misty Southworth for an encroachment agreement to allow a fence in the city-owned right-of-way on Russell Road located at one-fourteen Berkshire Road in the R one, one and two family residence district on pages, and this is pages eighty-three through ninety-two of your packet. We have the staff report, please.
Okay, yeah, the applicant is requesting approval of encroachment agreement to place a six-foot-high privacy fence that will extend just ten feet into the city-owned right-of-way. Request could have a negative impact upon surrounding areas. Approval of encroachment agreement could set precedence for other properties in the area. Two requests to have similar encroachments on the city right-of-way and could hinder future placement of utilities or sidewalk, although the encroachment agreement will have provisions for terminations if the area is so needed. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian or traffic conditions in the area. There are no sidewalks in either Russell Road or Berkshire Road. The lot in question is zoned R one, one and two family residence district, and it has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. The surrounding uses are all to the north, southeast, and west, are all residential development, zoned R one. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage in the area. No portion of lot in question is located in a special flood hazard area per FEMA. There is an eighteen-inch storm sewer, eight-inch sanitary sewer main, but they're located underneath Berkshire Road and thirty-inch storm sewer and sanitary sewer main underneath Russell Road. There's overhead electric on both streets, including along the southwest side of Russell Road, but the line crosses the road and there's a pole and street light in the vicinity at where the proposed encroachment would be. In the past, encroachment agreements the city has entered into have included provisions that allow for the city to give notice termination of the agreement if the right-of-way or utility easement. easement is needed for any future public purposes, and requiring that the city have no liability for damage that may occur. The applicant is requesting to allow for a six-foot-high fence to be constructed just 10 feet in the city right-of-way. The fence would be located 15 feet from the edge of Russell Road. Russell Road was platted within an unusually wide right-of-way. Staff recommendation, the staff recommends that the request for an encroachment agreement for a six-foot-high fence to be constructed 10 feet in the city right-of-way of Russell Road at 114 Berkshire Road be approved for the following reasons: The request would not appear to have a negative impact on city right-of-ways. Similar requests for allowing fences to be built in the city right-of-way have occurred and been approved in the past, and subject to the following: Assigned and executed encroachment agreement, and that's the staff report.
I have a question. Is there opposition from the utilities or engineering for the encroachment agreement?
Not, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. That was not my question.
This is Wilbur. My question is, looking at the pictures on 91, so how does the fence, the proposed fence, does it, will it cross over that storm sewer inlet, or how does, how does it impact that inlet?
Well, I guess the applicants couldn't speak on...
That storm drain is actually on the neighbor's property. Gary Fleming, 114 Berkshire, Waterloo. That storm drain is actually probably 20 feet off of our property. It's not even close. And we're just wanting to put the fence off the back of the garage, 20, or 15 feet off of Russell, over to the other property line, and back up and back to the backside of the house. So, we're not anywhere as close. That drain's probably 20, 25 feet from our property.
It's more in the house next door, right?
Yep, it's on their property.
Kane Keller House, okay.
Yep.
This is Schrader with staff. It's in the city right-of-way, so it's not on either property.
Okay, well.
It's in the city-owned right-of-way, but yes, it is in front of or behind, I guess would be more appropriate, behind their property. So, yep. I agree that your fence will stay away from it.
I do have a question. I don't understand how there was 15 feet in the front and 25 feet in the rear. That's why we're just trying to get 10 more feet in the back because it pretty much takes half of the yard up.
Yeah, this is Schrader with staff. I do not know the history of that right-of-way. It is dedicated as exceptionally wide. I don't, that, that width, is it 100? 100 feet? It might be more common if they would have developed a boulevard, you know, a boulevard concept, so I don't know if maybe they originally envisioned a boulevard on that street and just never built it.
Sure.
But yeah, it's, it's a typical street. We'll have a 60-foot right-of-way, and then we'll have somewhere between 16 to 18 feet from the back of curb to the actual property line. 15 is not uncommon either, so the fact that you're going to maintain 15 from it keeps it pretty typical with where a property line normally would be. But yeah, I don't really know the history. That's our best guess is maybe they envisioned a boulevard along that street.
Okay. It just seemed odd to me.
Is that white fence currently yours, that shorter fence?
It's, see, we got it mapped because the property lines, if you go back to that picture, our property line goes about two foot up of one corner of the neighbor's house, and basically to the corner of the neighbor's driveway on the other side. My understanding that that used to be first, second, third house was all one lot, and it was separated whenever, and the way they mapped that out just seemed awfully odd, you know? I mean, her landscaping, our property line goes right through the middle of her landscaping, which was there before we bought the house, which we don't have a problem with, but if you look at that picture, the property line on the backside of her house, it's literally two foot off the corner of her house, is the way it appears.
We do believe that the fence is ours because I have stopped them from taking it down currently.
So, will you take that down and...
Actually, I was going to leave it there because she has plants. She's a sweet old lady.
We like her.
And she has plants on the other side of it, and so the white ferns can come off the back of the garage, straight across, but up to the white fence.
Okay, got it.
And then off the other side of the white fence, run up to the corner of the backside of the house.
Perfect. I just, thank you, I just wanted that clarification of that in my mind.
It, it is cookie cutter the way that it is. It is chopped up, but, I mean, we're just, we just want a bigger yard.
Well, you don't, going from memory, about the first three or four houses along Berkshire that back up to the, to Russell Road don't have much backyard at all.
They don't, and so for us to come in 25 feet off of Russell, it was no backyard, and we got a dog, you know? So, it just wouldn't make sense to make it that small of enclosed backyard. 10 feet would be great because it's actually, I think, 100 feet across the back, and that extra 10 feet would just make it so much bigger back.
Right.
And I did plan when the fence are, if they had to get, for some reason, the city had to get in there, it's going to be put in panels so that, panels could be taken out, and I'd be willing to take them out if they needed to get in there.
In an emergency situation, you can rip them up. I don't care. I just want a fence.
So, you guys are perfectly okay with signing and executing an enroachment?
Sure, perfect.
Okay. Eric, is there anyone else there to speak on that agenda item?
Nope, there's no one else left in the chambers.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the phone? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else on the phones who's here to speak on this agenda item? Okay.
I recommend that the request for an encroachment agreement for a six-foot-high fence to be constructed 10 feet into the city right-of-way of Russell Road at 114 Berkshire Road be approved for the following reasons: One, the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the city right-of-way, and two, similar requests for allowing fences to be built into the city right-of-way have occurred in the past, and subject to the following condition: Assigned and executed encroachment agreement.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm over here sweating bullets, I go...
Wait, wait.
Sorry you were last, but, close to last.
Folks, we still need to vote on the motion here, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, so another disagreement we need to sign, does that have to fit Russell Road, or what is that one?
This is Schrader with staff. The planning commission makes a recommendation only, so it'll have to go on to the city council. We will get that, the actual encroachment agreement with the wording about indemnification and insurance written up. We'll get that to you, get it signed, and then we can send it on to the city council.
Okay. So, should we go to that city council meeting, or...
It, it's up to you. You don't have to, but it's probably a good idea, just in case any questions get raised.
Okay. All right, big group.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, we've already covered the preliminary plat for C10 West LLC, so we'll go to the request by LNBV LLC for the preliminary plat of Southland Park Sixth Edition, a six-lot residential subdivision, a replat of lots C5 and C6 of Southland Park Third Edition located southeast of 2950 Southland Drive in the R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District. This is on pages 106 to 117. We have the staff report, please.
Yeah, this is Heiburger with the staff report. The applicant is requesting to subdivide for the development of six single-family homes just south of Charm Drive and southeast of 2950 Southland Drive. The request for a preliminary plat would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. It would appear that the proposed residential uses would blend in well with the surrounding neighborhood, which consists of commercial condos and single-family homes. Post-preliminary plat would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding traffic conditions in the area. The proposed development be served by Southland Drive and Charm Drive, which are classified as local streets, Highway 63, which is classified as a principal arterial. There was a sidewalk on the south side of Southland Drive and north side of Charm Drive, and as part of the approval of the plat, a sidewalk would be required along the south side of Charm Drive. The errant question was rezoned from A1 Agricultural District to R3 RP Planned Residence District on November 24th, 1975. Property in question is comprised of two lots that were originally designated for commercial use, later designated as residential for duplexes. The site plan amendment was approved by the city council on March 1st, 2021 to allow for the construction of six single-family homes on the two lots. Surrounding land uses and their zoning designations to north, single-family homes zoned R3 RP Planned Residence District; to the south, multi-family homes zoned R3 RP Planned Residence District; to the east, single-family homes zoned R3 RP Planned Residence District; into the west, vacant lot, professional office, and commercial zone CP Planned Commercial District. The preliminary plat request would not appear to have an impact on drainage in the area. Preliminary plat denotes a 31,752-square-foot stormed water detention area, a 50-foot drainage easement on the southwestern portion of the property, and a 50-foot drainage easement on the southeastern portion of the property as well. No portion of the property is located within a floodplain as identified by FEMA. Should however, be noted that the project area is located in a special flood hazard area. According to FEMA's preliminary floodplain map, there is yes to be adopted by the city of Waterloo. The applicant, however, plans to apply for a Loma to remove all six proposed lots out of the 100-year floodplain. There is a 12-inch sanitary sewer line, 12-inch water line, and 15-inch storm sewer that are located within Charm Drive to the north and east of the proposed residential development. The preliminary plat is consistent with the future land use map, which designates the area as mixed commercial, medium-to-high-density residential professional office and compatible commercial. The project also supports land use goal number four, in which the community should work to offer a variety of housing opportunities to residents. The future land use map is used as a guide when making future land use decisions. The city of Waterloo is currently in the beginning stages of updating its comprehensive plan, and it may be desirable to change the future land use map to reflect the change in the proposed land use. The applicant is requesting to construct six homes along the south and east sides of Charm Drive as part of the preliminary plat request. The R3 RP Planned Residence District is site plan specific, and change to the site plan were already approved by the city council on March 1st, 2021. The size of the lots range in size from 10,727 square feet to 15,759 square feet, with an average lot size of 12,100 square feet. Each property shows a 25-foot setback from the front and 30-foot setback from the rear. The setbacks all meet the minimum requirements of the R3 RP Planned Residence District and match what was shown and approved on the site plan amendment on March 1st, 2021. The preliminary plat includes legal description, existing topography, contours, property lines, date North Arrow, and scale, sanitary sewer locations, water system locations, storm sewer location, adjoining subdivision size of individual lots, street servicing, street wet vegetation location grading plan, and street name. At the technical review committee meeting, it was noted that 10-foot utility easement is needed along the street frontage for Mid-American and detention area, shown extending slightly outside of Track A, which is intended for detention and will either need to be shifted over slightly or drainage easement added to the rear lot of Lot 6. I spoke with Wendell Lupkus, and he's already with VGA Engineering, and they've already made that change to the plat, and that will be ready in the future. Therefore, staff recommends the preliminary plat for Southland Park Sixth Edition be approved for the following reasons: The plat should not have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Plat should not have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The plat will create an additional infill development site, and that the plat is updated and additional documents are submitted as required by staff before the request is sent on to city council. And that's a staff report.
My initial question was going to be, should there be any special concern about drainage and flooding and water detention because it's 400 feet away from Prescott's, Prescott's Creek is located 400, 400 feet north of the preliminary plat? And because we've had applicants, and we've had people come before this commission before, and have concerns about flooding and water around Prescott's Creek, and I just wondered about those sorts of issues.
This is Schrader with staff. This is Schrader with staff. Yes, when there have been multiple site plan amendment approvals in the past on this, and there have been residents opposed, they express concern on the filling of the area and what that might do to drainage, but the applicant's engineer did provide a, a plan that was essentially identical to this preliminary plat showing the existing and proposed contours and documenting that the drainage would be properly handled. They're showing the existing drainage easement that takes all of the existing flow through this neighborhood and directs it across Charm Drive, and it continues after it crosses Charm Drive until it reaches Prescott's Creek. So, they're maintaining that existing drainage easement, and in addition to that, they're establishing a tract for their own drainage, so they'll create a detention area where all of the runoff from the six lots being proposed here will all drain into there, and they'll hold back that, any runoff coming off of that site during a, you know, a flood event, and slowly release it instead of letting it all out directly into the drainage way, which should at least, you know, cause it so that this development is not having any impact on flooding in the area. That doesn't necessarily address existing concerns, but they are meeting all the requirements of the ordinance and ensuring that they're not causing any problem to the existing drainage.
Now, in the, this is Flynn, in the photographs we have, obviously to the south and the southeast, those photographs have sitting water.
Those photographs look like they were taken in the winter or early spring. I think I've seen these photographs before. This is Schrader with staff. I think, yeah, I think...
Site plan amendment.
Yeah, these, these were the, the pictures that were with the site plan amendment and when it went through, and yeah, the, the ones that are from the springtime are, are showing during, you know, after a heavy rain event, Prescott's Creek does come up, and Prescott's Creek can either back up into this area, or even if it's not necessarily backing up into this area and it's drainage coming off of this area, but it can't outlet because Prescott's Creek is high, and then it does have standing water in those designated drainage ways. Now, it also had standing water on these lots because these lots were low, and that was one of, you know, the concerns that the neighborhood had, but the applicant's engineer, you know, noted that they were originally designed to be filled. The drainage ways were designed to handle based on them being filled, those three lots, or two, two lots that are now being split into six lots, and the other lots to the northeast that have now been filled and Spogman built homes on there, those just never, they just got, never got filled as originally planned and kind of sat there for years and years and years. This is getting the development finished off per the original drainage specs.
So, they're going to have to get, going to have to fill those lots in before they can get a Loma?
This is Schrader with staff. They, they're either done filling or they're really close to filling, and that is maybe somewhat, maybe the, they're either done filling or very close to done filling the site already.
Do we have a little bit broader map of the grade in that area between this proposed plat and the creek? I just want to know how much change in elevation there is between that and the creek.
This is Schrader with staff. I do not have that available. I could pull it up and send out a map. It, I'm sure it does drop some, but it probably does not drop a lot, which is why when Prescott's Creek is up, water in this drainage system can't get out.
I just, I just want to make sure that if, you know, we're, we're providing opportunity for residency, that, you know, there, it's not a short-sighted kind of deal where, you know, people are going to have homes get wrecked by floodwater.
So, Eric, what's the, what's Loma? L-O-M-A?
Letter of map amendment. It has to do with taking an area out of the 100-year floodplain.
Yep, that's the official process by where FEMA would remove a property or portion thereof of a, of a property out of the official floodplain.
So, you said letter of map amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that like an easy thing to do, or do they have, you know, as far as water levels, and how do they just determine to remove them when they've been in it for a while?
Yeah, so the current FEMA maps don't show this property as being in the floodplain, but the preliminary maps do show it being...
They put cross-sections across, you know, every so often, and, and have a determined here's what the 100-year flood elevation would be at that point. So, they just have to have ground elevations that are above that base flood elevation for that cross-section, and then they can prepare all, you know, the engineering data and submit that to FEMA to get it removed.
Okay, thank you.
I know we have that engineer on the phone. So, Mr. Lupkus, do you wanna speak on this agenda item?
Well, I certainly can. Eric did a fine job of detailing the process for the most part. This entire area was, was owned by some local developers, and the entire development was approved in the 1970s by the DNR. So, these drainage ways were part of that original plan. They actually would carry the water all, if you're familiar with the area, there's a red barn to the southwest. All that area is, was originally designed to be also filled a certain amount, and then that drainage would wind its way through and get to Prescott Creek. So, most of, most of what you see in photographs, and, and what you hear about from the residents is actually the backwater from Prescott Creek during a high-water event. What you'll find is during a severe storm, after, after the storm is done at Southland Park, probably six, six hours later is when the water will come up from Prescott's Creek. I'm familiar with that, because I live on the other side of Prescott's Creek. So, we basically have to be consistent with the original DNR, and what you're seeing is just now getting to the end of the process.
Thank you. Mr. Meany, are you also here to speak on the, this agenda item?
I, I would, yes, thank you. I, I don't have very many comments, but I, the only ones I ever hear are there are people out there that are against this project, because they perceive that it's gonna cause backup water and so on and so forth. Wendell had discussed this numerous times, about the size of the inlets and the outlets, and only so much water, so on and so forth. But there are people out there that want this project. If you remember, at the, one of the hearings that we've had, the gentleman that built a new home there, one of the Spelman homes, the one that's right adjacent to the waterway that exits from underneath the road from this side of the Southland Park toward Prescott Creek, and then onto the Cedar River. He was all in favor of this. He said, "It's the best use of this land out there. I wanna see neighbors across the street from me, and not commercial properties." And so, that's one of the reasons, staying with the area, we wanted to create single-family homes. As to the engineering, all I know is, is that this dirt that's been, being filled to DNR recommendations and requirements, it's been going on for over two years. We're in the third year now. We have not had any more issues than I'm aware of regarding water and water standing in the area and backup into people's homes. That's all I have to say.
Okay, I just had a question, who is just the previous speaker?
Wendell?
Mike Meany.
No, 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 the one who spoke after him, Mike Meany. Mike Meany?
Mike.
Okay.
Yes.
It's just that I couldn't see your face with the Zoom. I have the same problem at home, so it's not, it's not a thing, I just didn't catch the name.
Yeah, well, Mike Meany, yep. Mm-hmm.
Eric, is there anyone else in the chambers?
Eric has left.
Oh, okay.
This is John, now there's no, the chambers are empty besides us.
Thank you, John. Alright, are there any other questions for Wendell or Mike?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend the applicant for the preliminary plat of Southland Park 6th Edition to be approved for the following reasons. The plat should not appear, should, should not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The plat should not have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The plat will create an additional infill development site with the following conditions. That the plat is updated and additional documents are submitted as required by staff before the request is sent to city council.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Any further discussion items?
Nope.
Just note that our next meeting is July 13th, otherwise we have a, a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
John, I did have a question.
Yep.
My question was, when do we get back into-